Evening. I would like to bring this October 14, 2024, school board work session to order. The time is now 5:31. The school board would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional lands of the Denai people. And our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Pullen, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Ms. Maradi?
Here.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Burgess, did I get you?
Okay, Mrs. Hardy?
Here. Thank you. At this time, I will pass it over to the administration for a discussion of Article 3.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We're back discussing Article 3. We'll start at the beginning of the article this time. I know last time we had skipped ahead because Mr. DeGraw had an emergency that came up, but he is with us today, and so we'll start at the beginning. Our hope is to try to get through the remainder of Article 3. I know that's a lofty goal for today. And if we can't make it there, that's fine, but if we did make it through Article 3, then that could go on the next regular board meeting agenda, and that would continue our first reading schedules. So, you know, we'll see where the conversations go. Last time we workshopped a portion of Article 3, I think the conversation was really rich, and so looking forward to the conversations this evening. And at this time, I'll pass it over to Diana Dillard, our policy specialist.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. I think we'll just jump right in with our first policy, which is Policy 3000 Concepts and Roles. This aligns with, we're looking at both Chapters 4 and Chapter 7 for aligning with this entire article. And are people needing any time to read, or have we all read and have notes? Great. So then I'm seeing Mr. Doran and then Ms. Burnett.
Suggestion in that first paragraph, third line, "The school board striking intends to," and making one through five, you know, encourages, adding an S, explores, guides, et cetera. And in the last paragraph, "The school board desires striking desires to," and make it supports. I get what we, if this is what we want, then let's say it rather than intention or desires.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Doran, I, can you tell me what you said after the changes to the five-line items?
On the last paragraph, "The school board desires to," would strike desires to, and it becomes support.
Could we add "for" after advocates? Ms. Burnett?
So I had sent in an email asking the question on this in the numbered items, and this goes for the paragraph below too, once we get there. The beginning of each sentence structure should be capitalized, so encourages would be with a capital E, so on and so forth.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. And I did see that email. I didn't make any changes. I did want to address that, though. As far as kind of keeping the style choice to that, I have been keeping listed items that are not full sentences as a lower capitalized letter. That is what ASB largely does, although I would say that it's not consistently applied, but for the most part is how they choose to do it. And so I think it would be, it's what I've chosen to do to either follow through with the ASB or change it where it wasn't applied, but whatever the board chooses to do with that style, we can make adjustments. Mr. Burgess?
I would, I would say leave as is because, you know, the full sentence of each of these actually begins before the colon in that previous paragraph. It's the same way that regulations are written typically, when you have a start of a sentence and then many things that will, you know, a list of things that, that complete the sentence in different ways, if I'm making sense.
No, that makes sense. That's why I was, I wanted to make sure I'd ask instead of say, hey, this is what we should do. So that makes sense.
Awesome. Anything else on this policy? Not seeing any, so I think we're moving to page 3 with budget. Anything on that one? Ms. Burnett?
So I had also wanted to know about, so we've had that discussion with the designee. So in the working relationships of school board and superintendent or designee, the whole paragraph there, those two paragraphs are filled with designee. I'm wondering if in the paragraph, we take away the designee, but keep it in the title? Or if we want to just keep it all together? I, I just know that we've gone back and forth with that a little bit.
Ms. Doug, can you remind us where we landed in all of that discussion? It was my understanding that we were going to keep or designee in all of the articles except for Article 2, which was very specifically talking about the superintendent, or maybe if there are times where it's very clearly only the superintendent's duty, but otherwise using that superintendent or designee as a placeholder for all of those parts that may be designated to another department or person. Mr. Doran?
Though I've been an advocate very much, we don't need it. I believe we landed on last meeting that it was the will of the board to keep it, so. But I, I haven't agreed, but, but I think that was.
Where it was. That's what I thought. We keep coming up, and then I think people's.
Yeah, that's why Stella's like, we've around. I forget where we have landed.
Okay. And just one more point of clarity on that. When we get to it, you will see throughout this article that we have chosen to put in specific departments sometimes where we felt like it made sense to. However, that is a change from having superintendent or designee. So as we get to those, as we get to those policies, maybe you'll look at that, think that you'd prefer that to be superintendent or designee, where we have Transportation Department, Facilities Department, we have embedded those in certain places. Mr. Doran?
Question. Last paragraph in 3100 is the last line. It says that the committee will report its findings and recommendations to the board prior to the proposed budget. I think it's okay, but my question to what's helpful to us as a board, the, they're giving, the committee winds up giving their recommendations before they know what the proposed budget is. So I think it's a good, I think that's an important point. You know, because it's giving that input to the administration. We get the proposed budget. The last couple of years, I believe, Andy, we've tried to say, okay, now come back and look at the proposed budget and see where those are. But it's, it's a little bit of an awkward thing. I think it's workable. I just want to put it out there because I think it is worthy of some discussion, how we do that in practice going down the line. I, I'm not advocating for a change right now, but I think it's an awareness that they're, they're not giving any information to the budget itself. They're giving it to, and if the board at some point wants their committee actually respond to that proposed budget as we go into our discussions, then we may want to, it doesn't exclude it, but it may be something to consider for future.
Was there anything else on this one? So moving on to transfer of funds. Nice. Mr. Doran?
If we, just explanation, that last sentence in paragraph 1, "This policy does not apply to charter schools," just an understanding of, of that.
Yeah, so particularly to charter schools. So the school district at the board level approves an allocation to each charter school and doesn't necessarily have a role to play in allocation or assigning that, those dollars to expenditures within the charter. So as it stands now, the charter schools have the autonomy to trans, make transfers within their charter that would exceed $100,000. The district doesn't have the statutory authority to limit those. And the, the board doesn't approve a budget specifically to charter school expenditures at that level. Does that make sense? So for example, I'll throw out an example. So the board does approve expenditures within the Technology Department, okay? So salaries, benefits, professional and technical services, software packages. At the same time, they make, they approve expenditures within the Human Resources Department, certain number of FTE, Professional and Technical Services, et cetera, et cetera. This, this policy is stating if, if the district determines to make a large sum transfer from IT over to Human Resources, changing the document that the board approved, then the board wants to hear about it and approve that before that action is taken. And so that's kind of an example. So the board does approve those budgeted expenditures in all the various departments. In the charter schools, the board doesn't approve specific expenditures made at the charter school level. And so there's that kind of embedded autonomy for them to move their money around and not necessarily be held up by, by a board approval process.
Oh. Do they, is it in part of their, our agreement with them that if they're doing that much money, that they go to their APC or anything? Is there any procedure?
I wouldn't know that off the top of my head. I imagine, I imagine, my educated guess is their APC does, is watching expenditures, but maybe not. I don't know.
I can speak a little bit to it just because my kids go to a charter, and I'm friends with a lot of APC members, that yes, the APC is the ones who look over the budget generally when the principal prepares and does the budget. But even within contract, while the principal works for the district, the APC hires and fires the principal. It's this very nebulous, different world.
If I might make a suggestion then, is that we take that sentence out of that paragraph and put it at the bottom after the second paragraph in parentheses, "This policy does not apply to charter schools as they have their own procedures." I, I do agree that, I, I understand now, and that, thanks for that explanation, why we don't want to have it come back to the board. I was thinking not so much what's in their thing, but when, if we transfer $100,000 to them, then that's a, that's a different story. But that, I'm just thinking, it can be confusing there, but the way it is.
I think that sounds fine with me. I don't think that changes the intent of the language, so.
I think everyone seems to be okay with that. So are we ready? Moving on to revenue. Mr. Doran?
I'm just, just for understanding, the superintendent, second line towards the end, "Superintendent or designee shall ensure that all revenue sources are identified." I'm just thinking feasibility, would we, I, I don't, I, just an awareness more than necessarily a change, but I am, it kind of says that, you know, we can hold them on accountability if they miss, is that a grant that's out there? I mean, it's just that we have, what, we understand that to mean.
Minor?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point. The, the word "shall" and the word "ensure" is pretty strong language there. I mean, maybe you just delete those two words. So the superintendent or designee.
But if you changed it to "should ensure" and just revenue sources, if you take out "all," then it makes it less demanding.
Because I think it's a point well taken that there's very likely grants or other things that could happen at the state level that we're not aware of.
Make efforts to ensure that all.
Federal federal monies.
Make reasonable efforts to ensure that all revenue.
Now, I, maybe I like that, "make reasonable efforts," that all revenue sources, I, shall make reasonable efforts.
Ready to move on to grants? Okay. I do have one for this, but if somebody else has one. Ms. Burnett?
I'm just wondering if in the second paragraph, so it says, "To ensure coordination and to avoid confusion in developing proposals, grant applications, and collaborative partnerships of superintendent or designee will," I'm just wondering if that "will" were, "will" should be "shall." So should it be "shall establish standard procedures for the preparation of proposals and the review," or is "will" good enough?
I think "will" and "shall" are equally as strong, so if the board prefers "shall," I think that's.
Mine would be there.
Six one way, half a dozen the other.
Yep. Mine was, and I just copied the line, but I'll have to find it, the part where it goes, "The board will be notified of all grants pursued or awarded." And my question is, are we being told of all the grants being pursued? That seems excessive. Maybe it should just be, "The board will accept all grants."
Yeah, I mean, I think that for a district our size, it may be a little much to report to the board every time we pursue a grant. And if the board wanted that authority, maybe it's over a specific threshold of a dollar amount.
I think I saw Mr. Burgess and then Mr. Doran and Ms. Dillard. Did you want to jump in? If I could just set the, set the precedent, or not precedent, where this has come from, where this policy has come from. This policy would be changing the practice to where we are, the board, the district is not asking for approval unless it's over $100,000. So that is new, and that is a fairly big change. And I think after our last work session when we discussed that, and there were a lot of questions about that, Ms. Herbert and some of the other people that I was working with on this policy thought, well, let's just make sure that we're giving them a summary of all of the grants that we're pursuing so that we can keep them informed. So that's where that language was added, or why that language was added in. So that's where it came from. Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, I guess it occurs to me that sometimes teachers or educators, staff in our schools, will pursue small grants for things like clubs and, and other activities. And I think it, if, if that, if the intent is to include that here, I think that would be especially onerous, not, not just for the board, but for those employees. So I would, I think I would support taking out all grants.
But if we changed it to, "The board will be notified of grants pursued and awarded." Then it's not, if we didn't get it, maybe we don't need to know. But if we got it, you know, and it's big enough, and you do a great job with that, Dr. Minor, that's like, here's what it is, we got this, or this came through. Mr. Doran, and then did you want to jump the line?
Just to that point, that it could just be awarded, correct? Like grants that are awarded?
To that particular point, I'm concerned about that. I believe a threshold would be appropriate, but I think, and I think at one time there were situations where grants, before they were sent in, they came. I know sometimes there are timelines and some practicality of having to do this, but, but typically, when you put in a grant, if you get it, the assumption is you're going to take it and do it. If it's a very large grant that really commits us to something, then what, and we say, oh, thanks for all the work, but no, that can be real problematic for the staff who put in a lot of time working on that for the, the grantor who went through and said, oh, yeah, this is a good thing, here it is, and now you're turning us down. I think some notification is important for, you know, and I, and I see working that wording with that, those last two sentences. So there's some commonality that, you know, and there's a difference between notification and approval, but if somebody has a real concern, because what it's going to commit us to, you know, especially when we have multi-million dollar grants, you know, there's. And we might be picking up those, when the grants go, the expectation is we're picking up that staff. So I think that piece is important when it includes staff positions. But that's my concern with just saying, not notifying the board when there's something major coming.
So proposing that we're combining somewhere in there, all grants greater than $100,000 or any grants that involve funding staff positions, so that covers it, shall be brought to the board for approval. So no matter what will be approved for anything involving staff positions or over $100,000, the board will definitely be notified. And then are you in favor of changing, "The board will be notified," and I'm fine with removing all grants, and almost leaving it up to the superintendent? It's just saying that we would like to be aware of, you know, at the superintendent's, or the superintendent will make an effort to keep the board aware of grants that are awarded, just because it's nice sometimes to know, but we don't need to know every one of them. If it's okay, I'm just making a note to work on that language. I would say, just in the conversation with Ms. Herbert and looking at this language, I think they felt that it was easy for them to put together that information, but I'll follow up with, with everybody after and see what we want to put here. Mr. Burgess, you look like you were maybe having something to say.
Just pontificating. No, I mean, I think that there's, considering the utility of being notified of all grants that are awarded, because it does sometimes give a chance to highlight what staff do and the good things that people are bringing to the district. So I like the idea of being notified once things are awarded. Potentially sharing that out with the public more often than we do.
So knowing that, we'll circle back to that after they have done their magic. Is there anything else, Mr. Doran?
In this second paragraph, I would suggest deleting the phrase "and to avoid confusion." I think it's unnecessary there. We want coordination, and that, if you have that, we're going to minimize confusion anyway, so. And then I have one thing for the first paragraph. Second line, "They will seek as many appropriate sources of revenue." My concern there is particularly going after grants areas or things that can be distractors, that are not in line with our goals, et cetera. It's just, and I've watched districts do this over the decades, that it's money coming in. So we're going to go after the money even though it may not necessarily be what we can handle or such. And I think that judgment needs to be allowed, the superintendent, to say, what's worth spending time on and what isn't. But not saying, you go after everything that's out there.
Minor?
Yeah, I definitely agree with that sentiment, and I've seen a lot of school districts running into issues with that and astray from your strategic plan. So maybe combining some language in there. "The school board will seek appropriate sources of revenue that align with their strategic plan to possibly supplement, you know, to focus those grant-seeking efforts." And I think that gives the superintendent leeway to ensure that before seeking grants, you know, to check the strategic plan and see if there's alignment there as a first check.
I'm comfortable with that. I think it helps protect boards and superintendent in terms of keeping our concentration where it should be.
Mr. Burgess?
I would suggest that we strike as many. Yes, that looks good.
I'd agree.
Not seeing anyone else for this one. So moving on to student fees. I do have one if no one else does. My question was, does this apply to fees for sports? We have, you know, grown significantly those fees over the years and the abilities for some families to pay. So their participation is limited. I know it doesn't sound like it's written that way, but like, maybe it should.
This does not cover fees attached to interscholastic activities. That'll come up in Article 6, is that where that's at?
I don't think so. I'm not, I'm not sure that fees are addressed.
They, they are. So it'll come up in a separate section when we talk about ASOAS sports and the specific fees that are attached to it. So this is specific to course fees.
That's what it sounded like, but, okay. Anything else?
Would it be useful to add language clarifying that in case the member of the public reviewing this policy is confused?
We add a cross-reference that just says student or sports fees or activity fees and where that policy lies?
Yeah, sorry, I'm thinking about the waiver piece, because I know that was what it sounded like you were asking about. And there's a new AR that was just completed that is our student fees administrative regulation that's going to be attached to this policy. And it does go into all of the hardship waivers and different ways to cover fees, do community service for fees, which kind of ties into activities. But there is an activities policy that isn't completely finished that I think also addresses fees, but I'm not exactly sure what it covers. So that could be cross-referenced here, but just the A, the existing AR right now does cover hardship for broad fees.
Could we reference AR in the two different places just so that if somebody ends up here, they find where it is? Not seeing anyone else. So moving along to sale and disposal of books, equipment, and supplies. Mr. Doran?
Second paragraph, the use of the word "personal property." It's, if it's district property and not personal property, so delete that word, okay. And then just a question in the last paragraph, the $10,000 amount. Is that for an individual item or cumulative? So I'm thinking if we, we have 10 computers, and they're worth $1,000 each.
Individual items.
Individual.
Yep.
Individual.
Yeah.
Mr. Burgess?
If we're talking about individual items, I would suggest that we add that word, "individual," just to make sure it's perfectly clear. But if, unless that would run us into some sort of situation that would be, you know, more complicated. And then I have one other, on a different subject. Oh, and Ms. Dillard, I was suggesting that it would go disposal of individual items, although I suppose it could work in both places.
Top, top line, yeah, there you go.
Yeah. And then the other question, I guess it's kind of a question on the last sentence of the first paragraph. Should that "may" be a "shall," or is there a reason that it needs to stay "may"? And I guess if we don't want to make it "shall," I would, I would suggest that we change it to "should" to encourage that, rather than having stuff pile up that we can't use.
Dr. Minor?
Yeah, my only response to that is, I like "should" more than "shall." And the reason for that, I'm thinking about costs associated sometimes with disposing of property, that the district might not have the funds at that point in time to dispose of it. Right now, we might need to wait till the next budget cycle, because it might be $20,000 to dispose of, you know, whatever it might be. I know electronic waste is pretty expensive at times, sometimes to dispose of, and that falls into some other categories as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Burgess, and then Mr. Doran.
Appreciate that clarification. And I have a different suggestion that arises from it. So should be disposed of properly as soon as is practicable?
Doran?
I'd like the "may" just, and without the time reference, just for that flexibility to handle it as, as would be proper. I think it just leaves the administration better handled to decide how best to do it. And so I, I did like the "may" in that case.
Strong feelings either way from other members of the board. I know what I thought of when I read this, and I was like, I don't know that's been up for sale, but there's the really cool printing press downstairs. And I was like, well, they haven't gotten rid of it, and I don't know that they should. It's kind of cool to sit there, but that's where I went, like "may, shall," when I was looking at it.
I'm not super attached to it. Brought it forward mostly as a question. So, you know, depending on what other members want to do, I'm not going to.
I knew their way, too.
I mean, if it sways anybody, administration does appreciate the flexibility in "may," rather than kind of push. I think there are a lot of situations that warrant, that we might hold on to a particular item. But, you know, if there's an opportunity to get rid of things, we definitely will.
And split both of them and just leave, "may be disposed as soon as practicable."
Let's, let's change "as soon as win," "as soon as to win practicable."
When practicable, there we go. Have more, Mr.?
Well, just, just to Dr. Minor's point, super briefly, you know, our, without policy, our intent is to dispose of items, you know, in a responsible manner. We do e-waste, and we do that already. So I would state for the record that while policy is good, at this point, we don't need policy to, you know, direct us to do that, we are, for what it's worth.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Are we ready to move on to donations? Moving on. I have one, I think, is for this one. This is page nine. I have one, but I will wait if others. Mine was the part that says, "Begin a program that the board..." Oh, no, I think I was asking this, looking at my notes. With donations, something that might begin a program that the board would be, was unable to continue when donated funds are exhausted. But we don't, we do do that sometimes because we accept funds that we know, like when we had, it might be more grants than donations, but therapy that existed in schools, there was that one that went there, or school safeties or other things. I think sometimes we know that this is short-lived, or even our tutors that we accepted money for, for Alaska Reads.
Yeah, I mean, so I think the list is specifically talking about those items under the $10,000 that the superintendent would accept. And all the references you're stating are larger grants that provide, you know, positions. And so I don't know if that, that matters, but, you know, I think what it's trying to get at is that anything under $10,000, you know, wouldn't necessarily establish a broad-based program. And so, you know, we should be cautious about doing that. I don't know if it's too strong to say, you know, just that it can't be done, but if you feel strongly about it, putting different guardrails around that specific statement.
And I hadn't attached it to $10,000. I saw it as to be acceptable, so something that the board would need to accept. So over that threshold, a donation must not. It was very clear, like, absolutely can't. If it began a program, the board would be unable to continue when donated. But. It looks like Mr. Doran, then Mr. Burgess.
Appreciate the point you brought up. The focus is, this is a donation, it's not a grant. And, and it's coming from community members. So by its nature, it's one-time, basically, type of things. If it's a grant, that would, that would be in the other category we talked about. But this is just donations. And I think it's a, it's a good one. We've had people who've come in with $100,000 that we used for instruments, or they've given a sculpture or something, donated something to this, to the... We've gotten cars. I'm thinking a lot of the CTE programs, things of that sort. This is donations rather than grants, so.
I'm wondering if the difference between a donation and a grant, though, is a grant expects you to report and do things, where somebody might just say, "I want to donate $10,000 to pay off student lunch debt. That's a program I want to start." But we wouldn't be able to continue it past one school year. It would be done. So it's more like, I'm not saying it's not good language. I think it's too strong with "must not." Can we add some flexibility to be acceptable, a donation? I don't know if we change "must not," or we change, you know, something about that first line as far as beginning a program? Or what if somebody just wanted to create a program at one school for one year? Give a funding for a chess club?
Well, I would suggest adding an "unless" at that first line, and something along the lines of, you know, or an "except," you know. So to begin a program that the board would be unable to continue when the donated funds are exhausted, unless intended as a temporary program or pilot program, something along those lines. I don't have the language perfect. Yeah.
Yep, Dr. Minor?
Yeah, I'm glad, I don't have a great solution for fixing this, but I'm glad you brought up the issue, because in my mind, I think about our hockey programs right now. Essentially, those are being funded by donations. We're not sure from year to year if, you know, enough funds will be there to continue those programs. And so that is some pretty strong language, and we have programs that exist currently based on donations from, in those instances, the booster clubs of those programs.
Mr. Doran?
I'm all, I'm not sure what we're really debating here, in a sense. I think as a donor, giving something, we're not, they are not setting up a program to do it. And I agree that it should, I think that it should be a "must not," but they're not setting that up. If they're making a donation to a fund that we have, we're setting up the fund. And so that's, that's a separate thing. They're not doing that. So I think as a donor, the problem that, I think the thing that this really addresses is a donor coming in and saying, "Okay, I'm going to give you $100,000, and I want you to start something brand new. Here it is." And then the expectation that you're going to continue it. If it, if it's a donation to our program, and we do have a foundation, I believe we still do, educational foundation, to accept.
Yeah, bright futures, yeah.
That we draw upon, and we're starting the programs, that's fine. But I think if a donor comes in, you know, and they're doing, and this is not saying something for, like, giving money for, I'm thinking the musical instruments that we got is great. But it was specific to be used for musical instruments. That's fine, but it's not beginning a program. We're doing, we do the programs, not the donors. So, so I think in terms of, in summary, what I think is, this fits for the donor piece, does not limit us as to what we do as a district.
Not sure I'm totally there, but what if we instead just made it to, before accepted, there you should consider, and then, or something along those lines, these lists. So we look through, that that should come up. Does it begin a program that we can't? And possibly, sometimes that might be acceptable, but sometimes it absolutely shouldn't be, and all of the other things. So is there hidden costs? Are there additional staff, like, these are all considerations that should be made, somewhere removing the, like, absolutely, you can't do this if one of these conditions is met. We can definitely look at it again when it comes before the board, if we're... Mr. Doran?
But this, in terms of what you're thinking about, you know, to be acceptable. I lost my word. I'm thinking, you know, the, the following should be considered in, or the following should be considered in accepting a donation. And, and I think that lessens the heavy-handed piece, but it does say that these are important. I'm thinking particularly the playground equipment that we got. And it was a great donation. And then we found out how much more it was going to cost to really accept it and put it in, in place. So all of those factor in that.
Even add, should be carefully considered. You mean like really look at this. It's not just, you know. Anything else? Mr. Or Dr. Minor.
In the paragraph after the list on that second line, I would suggest changing equal to equitable. So providing equitable educational opportunities.
Great catch.
Anything else? So moving along to expenditures, expending authority. Not seeing anyone. Moving along to purchasing procedures. Not seeing anybody, but I think someone's working on it. Mr. Doran.
All right, you wanna, I had a concern about it. Oh. My, my question, you know, is did we need a? Oh, it was the last paragraph. It's on the following page. I just wanted to make sure that that statement of non-discrimination is consistent with our other statements.
I believe it is. Ivory, do you, yeah?
Okay, that was, that was my only concern because I know we've done different things with them. I want to make sure we have consistency.
We'll double check that too before it becomes to the board for first reading.
Oh, Mr. Burgess.
Different paragraph at the top of page 12, the very first paragraph. Just as just a suggestion, something to think about, but I was thinking that we could say, rather than starting with Alaskan, we could say, get even more local. Say, you know, borough or products and suppliers within the borough when available. When not, look for those in Alaska, you know, something along those lines. So that we're really focusing on supporting our community like they support us first.
Dr. Minor.
I really like that suggestion. Would you want it to build upon itself to be local and then state? And then something else or just replace, you know, local with state? I guess the other way around, but.
I mean, my, my thought would be to focus on the local. And, you know, perhaps that word could imply, you know, branching out. And so low, you know, but, but my intent is that we first look for products and suppliers in the borough. And, and then step out to the state and then step out further if needed. It's possible that the word local implies that enough already without specifying local then state.
Mr. Doran.
I was waiting to see what the wording was. It's still, just a question, clarification if I might through the chair. Still keeping the word encourages the selection? Okay. Because, and, and I'm, I'm okay with that. And my concern was what sort of priority we give. And I think leaving a better flexibility for the administration to make their recommendation rather than giving a priority necessarily, but it, it implies you're going to look at these first.
Right, right. Yeah, no, I think that the flexibility is absolutely necessary for a variety of reasons. But so encourages would definitely be the appropriate word there. Yeah. And, and, you know, those reasons could include that sometimes local things are two or three times as expensive as getting it somewhere else. So, oh, important considerations.
Mr. Doran, was that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see where that's in and where that local goes into that. Is it more the suppliers? Maybe local suppliers is that? And the, and the only reason I ask is we have suppliers who may not have Alaskan products, but they're local to us and there's good reason to give them the nod over somebody in Seattle. So I, but I don't want to get caught up just that it's, it has to be an Alaskan supplier, supplier of Alaskan products.
I didn't, I agree. I wouldn't want it to be Alaskan-made products. But it, part of it is about, as Mr. Burgess said, supporting the community that supports us.
Yeah, and I'm all for that.
Moving on to bids. Not seeing any hands, but we'll give people a second. Mr. Doran.
Got a question on the $200,000 amount. I know we've had settled on 100,000 for, for that. I wasn't sure for the bids on a dollar amount and it seems, I mean, as close as we get to a quarter of a million dollars, it's, it's a bigger issue. You know, so why 200 versus the 100?
Mr. DeGraw.
Yeah, so national standards do set that threshold. Currently, the recommended amount is $250,000. Locally here, the borough is at 200. We, we that, we kind of settled on the lower number of 200 as opposed to go on the 250. But yeah, just the, the increase from, I think, the 100 to the 200 is just a reflection of inflation over the last few years and just looking at that, how that threshold has increased and, and trying to, you know, control the number of, of bids that go through the, the formal process.
Doran.
Okay, as I ponder that, clarity between the difference between semi-formal and under informal bids, semi-formal or informal bid procedures are those? They seem redundant to me, but are those in accounting jargon different?
So, and I'll, I'll correct this information if it's not accurate here in the next day or so. Informal would mean in the purchasing world, procurement world would mean acquiring bids and quotes. And a formal process would be one where scope is defined more of an RFP-type process, where scope is defined, that's the big difference where, you know, you're looking at a more robust process where it's almost like a sales situation where a vendor is, is selling their services.
I understand the difference between formal and informal. In the third paragraph there under, the paragraph right under informal bids, the last line, there's a distinction between semi-formal or informal bids. And I don't want a semi, to me, they're redundant.
Yeah, let me, let me get some information from our purchasing director, Ms. Proper, and I'll, I'll look for a definition of what semi-formal means.
Ms. Dillard.
I did talk about this with Ms. Proper when we were going through this policy. And it's all very structured in federal regulations, what those different thresholds mean and what the requirements are around those thresholds. And so we talked about whether or not to put the more specific information in policy. And it was decided that that would be more appropriate for administrative regulation. And it's legal guidance that they're already following in their work anyway. But it is federal regulation language that have different thresholds to them.
Right. So there are, there's an actual difference between a semi-formal and an informal bid.
That is my understanding.
I can gather, we can gather that information then.
Yeah, I'd be interested in what that is.
If, if there's not a distinction between the two, then we'll look at taking out that semi-formal. And if there is a distinction between the two, then we'll be sure to get that information out to the board and what the difference is.
If I might just in practice, that would be, you've mentioned like just getting some quotes. I'm buying a piece of furniture for the school as a principal. I might get three quotes. And this is the best play where we can get it best. Okay. Which has, it's worked well.
And, and just to ensure the board, you know, if we were, if we were looking at a project or a good or a service in the 100, $150,000 range, there would be a robust process internally that would be followed to make that purchase, certainly. The, the big difference between informal and formal is the amount of time required and reporting and, and advertising requirements, minimum timeframes. And it really draws out the process. So just to kind of reassure board members, we're, we're still going through robust processes. You know, if it's 150,000 below this $200,000 level and ensuring that the district's getting the most bang for the buck.
Is there anything further on this one? Mr. Doran.
At the very end, do we need the citation listed of the court case during the district in Bowers? Which is quite a while ago.
Dr. Minor.
Not necessarily. I mean, I think it could be struck at this point in time.
And I don't know the details of it, but what I, impression at the time was it kind of is addressed when we talk about local suppliers. So.
Next, we have payment for goods and services. I think it's probably just the, I see Mr. Doran.
I just had a general question. Why is this necessary?
Mr. DeGraw.
I don't even want to give an educated guess on this. So we'll, it, it might not be 100% necessary, but I can do some research and we can get that information to the board. I don't.
I mean, I think it's a good question. As we've gone through this process, there are some things that I question, why is it in policy when there's process or state statute already established for it?
And follow-up. It could be just establishing general spending authority at the superintendent level or the designee level. So, but that's kind of an educated guess.
And, and then with that, they may remit payment for services. It's either we're gonna, we're either going to pay our bills or we're not going to pay our bills. I think elsewhere we're covered and I'm just, yeah, why it's in there, maybe for some small district someplace. But I think we have it covered in that, you know, we pay our bills and expenditures are done. And I think it's covered in many ways.
Bag it for administration to look at to see if we can strike it. Moving on to relations with vendors. Mr. Doran.
Last sentence in paragraph one. I suggest deleting it because I think it's really covered in there. So, so that's my first move. I have a question about it itself, but I, I suggest deleting that sentence.
So you're wanting deleted gifts include any gift purchased specifically for employee which is not generally offered to other buyers?
I think the first paragraph is clear. Or the first sentence is clear.
Not seeing any objection from other board members. Mr. Doran.
In the last paragraph on that page, what's sixth line? Sixth line, a tangible personal benefit from a firm under, inserting the word, under consideration for a contract. Just grammatical. And I think we talked about the citations, maybe all going to the end. So we don't, it's not chopped up as much. I know we had some discussion. I can't remember where we landed on that.
That was an area we didn't reach consensus on. AASB does list them throughout the policy. So if we wanted to stay consistent with that or past practice had been listing them at the end. So we would like consensus from the board on if there's a preference one way or the other.
I can, it looks like Mr. Burgess.
Yeah, and I just, I guess, just wanted to refresh people's memory on the conversation because we had talked about a couple of different options. One was moving everything to the end and the other was moving everything to the end, but having, you know, numbers as superscripts tied to those where it applies in line. Because the question was, you know, do, do we want it to be close to the relevant language that it actually talks to? Do we want to make sure that people understand why those citations are in there? I think having it a footnote like that, in that kind of footnote format, would provide the benefit of having that citation right at, next to the language that, that it belongs to while still allowing the clarity of reading a text without a lot of interruptions.
Ms. Dillard, you said that that was fairly easy and wasn't, wouldn't be cumbersome? Or am I incorrect in remembering that? or am I incorrect in remembering that?
It, it could be done, yeah. It would not be a problem to change it. I would, I would advocate for keeping it throughout, I mean, I'm just gonna put it out there, for keeping it, especially since the cross-references are a link to, like, and I did talk to, like, Ms. Gillum from a principal's standpoint, you're looking through a search and seizure policy, or, like, having that cross-reference right there in the heat of the moment to click on. And that's not always going to be applicable to all the different policies that we're looking at, so maybe we could be more selective on cleaning it up and moving them all to the end where it doesn't seem as important, but there are times where it is beneficial to have that click of a button to the cross-reference right there for you. But I can make any changes that we want.
I know when I'm reading policy, I prefer them to be in there, especially the clickable links when I've gone to our, where it's housed. Any other board thoughts where they're landing? I think the administration wants a clear where we're going, so, need board thoughts. Ms. Maple?
I think that a change at this point for this large of a document, if it's, if there's not huge feelings on either way, that leaving it how it's been done is probably the most reasonable path forward.
I think we're going to leave it how ASB generally does it. Was there anything else? Mr. Doran?
Last, at the bottom of the page, under universal service program, E-rate vendors. Second sentence, it says, E-rate participants. And I find participants confusing because those are both vendors and the district entities. So who are we really talking about there? I'm assuming we're talking about district personnel, not the vendors, and we're.
Yeah, I think that's correct, because later on in that sentence, it talks about the provider. So, I think it's the district or district employees would be covered under participants.
So we would change it to district employee, or?
If, if you felt like participants wasn't, didn't provide you the clarity that was necessary. E-rate service provider is there further in the sentence to delineate, you know, it being different than the participants. So, if that's not clear, E-rate participants may be in parentheses.
The district.
District.
The district. And then, may not.
I, I just think that clarity is important, and I'm also thinking the provider may not be the vendor, depending upon how broadly one talks about E-rate things. I mean, there, there could be a go-between, so, so I just, I just think it's the employees that we're really talking about here.
Ms. Maple?
It, the next paragraph goes into a pretty detailed list of who that applies to. The E-rate gift prohibitions apply, and then it lists out, who all would be associated with being E-rate participants, I think, or associated with the program.
I'm betting it's largely coming from the CFR, so I don't even know if we'd take out participants. I think we leave E-rate participants in parentheses, the district, so then maybe that's clarifying to people who might not immediately be like, that's what we're doing, but that's who we're referring to. Anything else on this one? Not seeing any, so moving on to management of district assets and accounts. Mr. Doran?
Just a question under audits, the last sentence. In accordance with the requirements of federal and state regulations, are there any borough considerations that need to be factored in there?
Mr. DeGraw?
Not that I'm aware of, nope.
Yeah, I couldn't think of any, but I.
And whatever ordinances there are, they would be referring to federal and state as well.
What's on that one? Not seeing any, so inventories. Mr. Doran?
The only question I had on here is whether this one and the next one should be, could be or should be combined.
So just my immediate response to that, we can look further into this, but they are two different topics, technically speaking. So one, establishing that the district 3440 is gonna maintain a system to track inventories of the various items across the district, and then 3440.1, the fixed asset capitalization, that's just tracking and maintaining values, life expectancies of larger assets in the district to, really, yeah, it's, it's life expectancy, and then at disposal, you know, establishing values of those more valuable assets to, to make sure the district's keeping, keeping value and maintaining value in those larger cost items. So technically, those are two different topics, but.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
So it sounds like inventories are good. Was there anything on fixed assets and capitalizations? Not seeing anything on that one either, so money in school buildings. Ms. Burnett?
Mainly just a question, towards the end of the paragraph, any money left overnight in schools shall be kept in locked locations provided for safekeeping of valuables. Do we have money left overnight in schools, and why should we not, should we maybe be not keeping it there? That would just be my immediate question.
Dr. Minor?
We do have safe locations in each of our schools. And are you advocating for not having money overnight in schools? Is that what you're? I mean, I think that would be tough on schools, especially when you're thinking of secondary schools that open before banks are open and need potentially some cash on hand for different services that they're offering and change that they might need to make for folks. So that's, I would advocate for keeping some small amounts on hand in schools.
Mr. DeGraw?
And just to build on those comments, couple of points. One is the implementation of the in-touch program has dramatically reduced the amount of cash that schools are holding, which is good. And then secondly, I lost my train of thought, oh, the annual audit regularly reviews our processes and internal controls of cash in buildings, and we've, we've received flying colors on those each year. So, and we've, we've dramatically lowered the amount of cash, and then we're doing a pretty good job of, of taking appropriate precautions.
I was just looking at it from a safety standpoint, but it sounds like it's not, it's minimal, so.
Ideal, and ideally, ideally, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have, but as Dr. Minor said, just logistically speaking, that we can't, you know, eliminate it totally, in totality, so.
There might be school activities in which PTAs are collecting money or kids are selling things for different stuff, and that would be stored. I know there was times I was at my school selling things till 11:00 PM, if it was a dancer, yeah. So next, we have student activity funds. Mr. Doran?
Two quick questions with it is, one, the way this is, does it meet current needs on the practicality of the school? Yeah, the school's gonna have some money, having that, that for long. But does this give administration and principals, there's, you know, their, it meets their needs?
Yeah, I really, I really think it does, so.
Then, the other thing that I was just wondering whether this, and it's just a question, but do we need, whether here or someplace, the clarification that these monies are part of the district finances? I mean, once you give, if you collect money in the school for, on behalf of the district, they're not your money. And I know sometimes there's been some confusion over that, well, I raised the money for this, so, but they actually become district money, and if I leave, the money stays with the district. I don't know that we need that here, and maybe an AR, that clarification, or, but do you have more hands-on experience?
Mr. DeGraw?
So, yes, I agree 100% with that, and that's 100% factual. I personally, and the accounting department, I know, has not encountered a sentiment of, you know, or a thought of those dollars are some individuals' dollars. They're, I've, I've always encountered the, the 100% agreement of those are district dollars, so.
Okay, then I'm, then I'm okay with that. Not an issue, let's not make it an issue.
So now we're on student activity funds. Ms. Dillard?
Just a quick point on this, because we've done a lot of work in separating what is gonna be school-connected organizations and fundraising, and there's these different places in policy where this will, they will live. This is very specific to school district funds and funds that are raised and organized under school-sanctioned or school-sponsored activities.
Not seeing any hands, so on to periodic financial reports. Not seeing anything on this one either. So, on to fund balance classification.
Are there other fund balances that we have that are not covered under here?
Mr. DeGraw?
So this policy, I'm quick, I've gone over it a couple of times. I'm pretty sure this is addressing our operating fund or general fund fund balance. And so other fund balances outside of this technically would not be included. For example, but that, that statement probably isn't 100% inclusive. When looking at the spending prioritization section, there, there are restricted funds in, for example, our transportation fund, our food services fund. And so, in that sense, you know, the, the philosophy in the spending prioritization section, that could apply to other funds other than the general fund. But as far as limits, minimums and maximums that the board is targeting here, that would specifically be speaking to the general fund or the operating fund fund balance. Not sure if I answered your question, but.
So, I think we're probably okay on that. But we reference in the spending prioritizations, we reference restricted fund balances and unrestricted fund balances, but we only talk about unrestricted subsequently. Do we need something in terms of, to address restricted?
So, we, we speak of minimums and maximums of unrestricted because minimums and maximums typically don't apply to restricted funds, if that makes sense. So, restricted funds, a common restricted fund is like grant funding, some kind of grant. And there wouldn't necessarily be maximums, include that, we receive a grant and we have those dollars to spend. Whereas unrestricted funds are dollars, really more of the pure cash reserves that one thinks of when, when we talk about fund balance. And so, that's why minimums, well, maximums apply. Minimums don't typically apply to that, but.
Ms. Maravi?
Would, like, nutrition services and transportation be restricted and might need a maximum and minimum in those, because they're restricted but not a grant?
So, technically, in theory, that could occur, but it's very far from reality, right? So I'm not sure how applicable.
Be a great problem, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I, I can't, I have, admittedly, I have no idea what would happen if, yeah, if, if we received restricted funds from the state for transportation, for example. We're three or four million dollars underwater there. I don't, I honestly don't know what would happen. I'd have to find out if, if, you know, our bill was only six million and we received 10 million.
In one scenario that this might benefit the stability of the, financial stability of the board and the district would be to implement a minimum for transportation and nutrition services so that it is always funded and able to be used. Just thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that statement. The, the flip side of that would be, you know, potentially, you know, not, not necessarily hand time, but compelling the board, we would make more urgent subsidies from a general fund. You know, it would, it could complicate things on that front. But, yeah, in, in theory, what you're, I agree with what you're saying, you know.
Dr. Minor?
So in our initial draft, I believe, when we reviewed this policy last spring, we did have definitions of other fund balances in it. And at that point in time, I think the board had said that it was too cumbersome to have kind of those definitions in there, so we stripped that away, and that's what's reflected here. But if the board felt like there needed to be kind of more information upfront about other fund balances, we could add that back into the policy potentially and have the board take a look at that.
To that point, just throwing all ideas out of the table, you know, it could, I don't know if it could live in AR, you know, a more expanded, drawn-out narrative of fund balances and other funds, that's an option as well.
Doran?
I, based on the conversation there, I, I think that might be more appropriate in the AR, but I, and I think an AR would be good to have it. I have a related comment, but maybe see if other board members come up on this.
What is yours?
Whether this reflects our borough consideration with fund balances. It references our goal of 6%, it references the state 10%. But we're also governed by the borough, which puts us at about 20 million. But certain funds are included in the borough calculation and certain ones excluded, and whether that reflects here and probably should be a reference point. But, but I'm concerned about not having that borough calculation in here as well.
Yeah, from my perspective, I wouldn't be opposed to some kind of statement in the maximum section that, that the board would adhere to the borough ordinance that, that addresses that. I wouldn't be opposed to that. We could put something in there addressing that.
This is one, some of those things that governs us.
Also, just add the reference then to, to the borough code.
I think we should have the reference as we have deeds referenced, and we have the state law, but that's, that's a pretty specific thing that. the state law, but that's, that's a pretty specific thing that does impact us, if we're over that, basically, money goes out from the district, same to the state, lands is a different, so I, I think that's a pretty important piece of policy. So, I guess adding a paragraph and under that maximum.
Yeah, we could just add in a statement there at the end of the maximum fund balance, the, the intention is to also adhere to the borough cap.
So, we're on that maximum fund balance, is that maximum unrestricted fund balance? Because we have the minimum unrestricted?
Yes, the borough code specifically relates to unrestricted.
So, we should insert the word unrestricted, maximum unrestricted fund balance?
And what section are you addressing, Mr. Dorn?
The, the bottom section on, right now says maximum fund balance.
Right.
As we talk about the minimum unrestricted fund balance.
Right.
Maximum unrestricted fund balance.
Oh, in the title? Yeah, I'm not opposed to that.
I, I understand that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else on that? Not seeing any. We will move on to maintenance. Not seeing any hands. Going to venture that we're ready to move to energy conservation. Mr. Dorn?
This, this was one that I kind of felt was unnecessary, I'm trying to think, it's the purpose of putting it in here, and what's the feasibility for us to do? I think when we talk about efficiencies and such like that, and the planning that's already gone into buildings where we have multi, multiple fuel sources to heat from, which is cheaper, we've got a lot of that, so I wasn't quite sure why this needed to be in policy.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Mr. DeGraw just stepped away, I do believe that there's times where I'm not sure if it's federal regulation, or the state captures this information from the district already, I know that we're doing a lot of this data collection already and reporting that back out to the state, and we're already, you know, doing the work of regularly seeking more energy-efficient means of conducting business, so, if we need specifics in terms of if it's necessary, we can bring that back, I think from a pure, kind of just standpoint from the district, it's not bad to have, especially because it does tie into our budget, and so the board encouraging the district to be as energy-efficient as possible as a way to reduce operating funds that could go, you know, into the classroom.
Ms. Burnett?
What if it was thrown into 3510 into maintenance? It just added as another paragraph, like, maybe after the final paragraph there, all school buildings and equipment shall be regularly inspected, then just start a new paragraph discussing energy conservation. It kind of does fit inside all of that, I, I mean, that would just be a suggestion, instead of getting rid of it, just add it to 3510.
Andy, we were talking about 3511 on the energy conservation, and if there was a reason that we needed to have a standalone policy.
The 3511?
Yeah, 3511.
The only, the only thing I would respond with is just, it would make, as a standalone, it makes more of a, it's more of a statement of, you know, energy efficiency, you know, what Dr. Minor was saying, yeah, and we, we do regularly look at these items, the borough's been a good partner, they, oh, probably three or four years ago, did a project that, that introduced LED lighting throughout the district, and that's been a big energy saver, so my, I'm not opposed to combining them, just, I would say, as a standalone, it makes more of a statement as a board, but, it's my two cents.
Then I'd be in favor of leaving it.
Inflation.
I'm supportive of keeping it as a standalone, much for the same reason, and also because in our classrooms, we teach students, like, I know in third grade, they study energy and they go through and look at, like, how much they use inside your house, this is something we teach students, so to have a board policy also, and global warming and all the other things, we should responsibly use our resources. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to equipment. Anyone? Right, moving on to, I think, where we started, so we have done this one already, and Ms. Dillard, can you remind me where we?
We stopped at 3515.6 surveillance video footage.
515.6. Forty, I think? No, no, I'm off, where, where is it?
I'm not there yet, sorry.
Okay, page forty. Anyone have anything on that one? I think we talked about that one some, yes, we were kind of near the end, or no? My, my brain is fuzzy, so I'm relying on, it was a lot, all right, so, starting anew, I didn't have any notes for this one, use of school safety video surveillance monitoring systems. Anyone? Yes, Ms. Dillard?
This does have a robust AR attached to it.
Mr. Dorn?
In the first section, particularly when I look at the second paragraph, just a question, because I don't know it, are we covered here if there are criminal acts or disciplinary action, I'm trying the, the identifier when they're released, if I'd identify students? It's, I just want to make sure we're okay in terms of if we're doing it, reviewing it for disciplinary purposes, and obviously, kids are identified, or if there are criminal acts, which I think the criminal acts would be covered, we wouldn't be releasing it unless we had a subpoena or court order for that, I would assume, but, that was just a question I have, does this cover us for those circumstances?
Yes, it does, and it, it falls within, like, the legal, for, for requirements for that as well, and so, we do our best to, you know, blur out students or ensure that students aren't identifiable, but if a district did not have that technology or wasn't unable to do so, if it is part of a student's educational record, you, you still have to turn over that video if it's subpoenaed, or it's a part of some kind of disciplinary action, so, I think that paragraph does capture what, what the district needs to do in, in those terms.
But, Mr. Dorn?
Under camera placement, they can be installed in public areas, what about classrooms?
Minor?
I don't believe we have any cameras currently in classrooms, it is not against state regulation to have them installed in classrooms, but I think when we say public areas, you know, when it starts to list other things, it, it doesn't specifically say classrooms.
Right.
So, the intent is not to, to place them in classrooms, if that's your question.
Right, and, and when we start breaking them out to describe which ones are public and which ones are less public, what our practice wants to be, so to speak, in terms of, you know, when we, when we do, you know, if teachers are doing video for their national certification or so, I mean, they have to get clearances and stuff like this, and we also try to do it from the back, so kids aren't directly in it, I mean, we, we take some things there, but, you know, in terms of for safety, if that question was to come up, well, can you just put a camera in my classroom, or not, is?
Yeah, the answer has been no in the past, because we've gotten that question a few times, but we don't consider that a, necessarily like a public space that we would put security cameras in.
Then I'm suggesting that maybe, depending on how the board feels, we, we specify that.
Any feelings from the board on adding classrooms to the list of places where you would have a reasonable expectation of privacy?
I guess I should clarify that statement, because there are cameras in gymnasiums that are technically our classrooms, so I don't want to box us in, in certain areas.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Burnett, then Mr. Burgess possibly, yeah.
So, it clearly says in here that cameras will be in athletic areas, I would consider that to be gyms, I don't think we need to add classrooms in here, I think it's, what am I trying to say here? I, I just don't think it's necessary to add classrooms to that.
Mr. Burgess?
Kind of curious about pros and cons, and is there a reasonable expectation of privacy in a classroom? I, and, and to be clear, I, I would think that, I, I would not necessarily support placing cameras in classrooms, certainly not every classroom, but, but I just, I, I wonder if, if there really is in that setting a reasonable expectation of privacy, and for whom, I would think that as a, you know, just thinking about if I was a teacher, that's my workspace, and that I would want a certain amount of privacy in that space, so, but, you know, especially after school hours, but I, I don't know, I'm just kind of trying to get an idea of.
Can say, as a teacher, that I, like, I can see sometimes some pros to their being there, but I would not love one in my classroom, and also, as somebody who has traveled with students, that oftentimes classrooms are used as living spaces when you're having visiting teams, and I think it sets up an opportunity for things to be taken, where, like, I know I've changed my clothes in a classroom before, I've, you know, I've had students who are using that as a living space on a running cross-country trip, it, it does have a reasonable expectation of privacy if you've blocked a blind and closed a door.
Thank, that, that's helpful, I would lean towards supporting including it in that case.
Dorn?
The distinctions that are made under that camera placement are, classrooms doesn't neatly fall in either one. I raise it, and, and we have a certain expectation of privacy for the students in the classroom, which is covered by where we don't want a parent or another student videoing, because their students have rights of privacy and what they share, and stuff. I guess, okay, not saying classroom specifically, not mentioning it here in the, in the policy, partially because it's very much on safety, is the primary focus of this policy, but I do think we need to think, how does that play, and we may need some clarification, whether it's in an AR or elsewhere, maybe it's under the employee section, you know, with teachers and stuff like this, so I guess I would, I can go either way in this particular thing, but I think it needs to be in our discussion at, at some point, and maybe, maybe address it, because we sometimes do get the question, and to be able to say, okay, yes or no, and gives administration a clean, clean direction.
I have a, oh, go ahead, I was gonna say, I, I would think also our unions would want to weigh in on if we're putting anything in a classroom, I think many educators would have strong feelings about the idea that you could put a camera in, in the classroom, not that, like, it's a running joke, go ahead, we're not worried about it, but, I think the opportunities for after-school and feeling of voyeurism, or that it could be abused, not, but anyone should or would, would give me the greatest pause. Mr. Burgess? Oh, I'm sorry, actually, Ms. Anderson, okay.
I would, wouldn't put teachers under that undue pressure and burden of having that, you know, with every student armed with a cellphone, who drop teachers in the midst of a lot of hot water, unbeknownst to teachers, so, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that.
Burgess, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree, that in general, it sounds like there's good reasons not to have cameras in classrooms, I wonder, though, if there are exceptions to that, for example, if there's repeated incidents that are occurring in a particular classroom, if you could temporarily bring in a camera and, and operate it only during, you know, school hours, something like that, so that if, if there is an ongoing issue, we have the opportunity to, to get evidence.
Ms. Burnett, and then Ms. Anderson?
I would actually agree with what Mr. Burgess just said, and that was the reason for me not wanting to add that language to the policy, I, I'm not in favor of imposing cameras in any way on anybody, but, if there is a need where we need to do that, it would be contradictory of us to put in there that we prohibit it in classrooms and then need to put it in there, so, I just would not be in favor of adding that it's prohibited.
Ms. Anderson?
Just gonna say, because, you know, you put a camera in a room, is the behavior you're observing, is it genuine? Is it something that, that was already going on, so, you know, there are already investigatory situations in place, standards that we have, that every district employee has had to go under, you know, a complaint is filed, there's certain procedures that have, that immediately follow until that investigation is, is run its course, so I don't see that for us to go that measure.
Mr. Dorn?
Two things, one, to the idea of putting a camera in to observe inappropriate behavior possibility, as a supervisor, I would vehemently speak against that, that if I have a concern for teacher behavior, I should be there and see it, not, not catch us, you know, and as a supervisor, I've watched where that can be done. And as a supervisor, I've watched where that can be done quite easily, quite readily. The other piece is why, and though I brought it up, I don't, I'm feeling it doesn't belong here, but we do, we should look at it and consider it because we have had cameras in the classroom, streaming, we do Zoom. And so as we move ahead, broader conversation might be to look at that type of situation and, because there are pros and cons in that and different things that come out. So I'm gonna say in terms of my suggestion to put it here, I'm supportive of it not going in this section, but that we, and I think Diana's been capturing a number of the discussion questions, but, you know, I think at some point, we should see where that fits and look at.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that I was not considering teacher behavior, but student behavior was the potential concern. For example, if there's repeated theft in, from a classroom, or if there's, you know, other sorts of repeated incidents that you can't, that you need some sort of evidence in order to take disciplinary action. I am not, and will never be, in favor of recording employees just because, I've, you know, been in that situation when I had a retail job, and it's not cool. I wouldn't want a camera in my office either, and not because I'm doing something wrong, but because it's intrusive. But I do think that there could be situations that arise where it would be useful on a temporary basis at least to have that camera there. And the other thing I wanted to say is that I would absolutely support discussing this with the unions before making any changes.
Ms. Maple.
I think it, it just, it seems like this is, that everything that we're speaking to actually just reiterates that how this is already written is totally fine, that it doesn't explicitly say that they are there, it doesn't explicitly say they aren't there, so if there are extenuating circumstances, we're within our rights. The assumption is that we're gonna act as we are currently acting, which is to, like, that is not a norm that we put, so I think it's, like, perfectly vague enough and perfectly specific enough.
Not broke, don't fix it. Are we ready to move on past that one? Okay, moving on to district data protection program. I'm not seeing any hands. Ms. Marotti.
Is it sufficient for administrations, preference?
The policy is, and I think we'll develop an AR that goes along with it.
Moving on to electronic email.
Just a question. In that first paragraph, "The district's email system is not intended and should not be used for personal use," blah, blah, blah. My question was, what if it is used? I do think that it's important that that sentence, that last part of the phrase, the sentence, employees should have no expectation of privacy when using the email system. I think that reminder is really important. But the reality is, a lot of times you do, people send personal as well as, you know, and I know as a board, because, but we're under a whole different thing on our communications are public to a staff member, you know, by, on a broader basis, they are public, even as a principal, anything I wrote could be, again, I don't want to belabor it because I don't really have a problem the way it is, it's just whether there is something we need to anticipate, and I don't know what current policy messages, other than, yeah, try not to use the same one.
Yeah, I think this aligns with current policy and is pretty standard in school districts.
Next one is risk management. Mr. Doran.
So my question on this one, on the first, the, the listing there, our paperwork primarily stuff, does people fit in? I'm trying to think in terms of, you know, shall be, I know it's not limited to, but we don't talk about people, it's just nebulous paperwork, things, is that? And it's a question I don't know.
In terms of the scope of the, our risk management department's work, is that, is that the question?
Yeah, because it's focused very much, you know, even the, to protect district property and resources, but we also have risk management in terms of people, students and staff, and risk management does a lot of work with that.
So, yeah, I guess my initial response would be, we probably, it'd probably be difficult to include an exhaustive list here. The one big insurance related to people, I would say, would be health insurance, and we do coordinate with the borough on that, so, you know, I'm not, we, my initial thought is we could add that. Workers' compensation is people, so that is, but yeah, adding health insurance would entail a large group of that people concept that you're talking about. But yeah, the list could go on and on and on, be a long list if we were to include everything.
Dr. Minor.
Yeah, I was just cross-referencing ASD's policy 3530, and they have a nice bullet that might encompass some of this, of what you're getting at, Mr. Doran. Establish a risk-free work environment and educational environment, which district personnel, students and the public can enjoy safety and security in the course of their pursuits. So taking some of what they have and getting at that broader scope of it not just being insurance, but that risk management really does look at the day-to-day operations of how we're doing things to try to mitigate risk for the district and employees.
So Mike.
Doran.
Yes, I would like something like that, I think, and because I'm, and what I'm referencing is risk management, I mean, they, when the high schools used to do floats, risk management would come by and say, well, do you have a fence around it so no one's gonna fall off or go under the wheels? I mean, or sometimes field trips, you're going to the Kinross Mine, you know, are there safety things? And I know these are questions that have come up in practice, so that, I think that might cover it.
Mr. DeGraw.
I apologize, I misunderstood Mr. Doran's question, the language, not necessarily the list. The only thing I would want to question in what Dr. Minor just read off of ASD's policies, it sounded like, did they say risk-free environment?
Yeah, that also stuck out to me because you'll never risk-free.
Impossible to do that.
Schools, we are a risky business.
We have nothing risk-free.
Impossible task of creating a risk-free environment.
Yeah.
So that narrative did sound very good, I would just omit anything that says risk-free.
And I would agree with that. I cut my ear and then I thought, well, I'm not sure I heard the whole thing, so before I, once I look at the whole thing, but I think you're right. Absolutely. So if you want to play with that and maybe read back.
So yeah, we'll add on to that policy and try to get that out to the board, the changes prior to first reading.
Mr. Doran.
And I had one other, the last sentence is listed herein, outline the minimum requirements. The question that somebody reading this would say, well, what are they? So do I have to go to each of these statutes? Or is there a summary that should be included there? What, is it, says it's? And it's a question rather than a request.
Thinking, and I might be wrong, but it's talking about what immediately follows, where it has Alaska statutes and then Alaska administrative codes, so it's referring to those listed herein, they come right after under legal references.
Right, but anybody would need, so I guess I don't want an exhaustive list anymore than at the beginning, but is there some summation or there isn't, and it would, you really have to go to each code individually?
Yeah, I mean, I think you would have to go to each individual code, and, you know, if we added that to the policy, then that would be, you know, kind of rehashing state statute and codes within the policy, and it might get kind of long, but we can do a cursory search and see if there's a way to provide a summary statement, but the way I read it is that you would need to go to each individual one.
Ms. McDaniel.
I would just caution maybe against the summary, because if the statute changes, then you have to come back to the table to do policy changes. So if it just refers back to the policy, then people can look at it in its most current form, so that could cause more work down in the future too, as for the board.
Not seeing any other hands, so, or next, on to transportation. And I did have one for that, and it was just to change charter school transportation to school of choice.
I did catch that from you last time, and we talked about it. This charter school policy is required by state statute, state statute or charter school statute says that we have to have a charter school transportation policy, so I, I'm not sure that we want to mix the two, and we discussed potentially putting in, because there's a pretty robust AR that goes with this policy too, and putting information about schools of choice into the AR was what we discussed.
Thank you for looking that up, by the way. Ms. Burnett.
Okay, so I was really looking at this one, and I'm wondering if we just need to slightly change some of the language, such as changing things to, so instead of saying "are provided transportation services," may be provided transportation services, and then it, that's in that first paragraph, and then in number one, changing that to the district may provide, and then also somewhere in there on a space available basis and on budgetary availability. I think, maybe that's not the exact wording, but I do think that it is very prudent that we put in something stating along the lines of what's happening right now, which we cannot provide buses because of budgetary constraints, so maybe we could say something along those lines, or even referencing driver shortages as well, because both are issues. I don't know, Mr. DeGraw.
Yes, both are issues, yeah.
You know, when we had originally provided some things, I know Watershed had some service and Effie, I think, did too, were we charging the charter schools for that service?
No. It, yeah, so, so transportation services historically have been provided on a space-available basis. Yeah, probably a good idea to make some edits along the lines of what Ms. Burnett is suggesting, because there could be, if there's shalls, there might be an understanding that it shall be offered. So, yeah, I mean, I agree with that principally speaking, so, but yeah, the services are offered on a space-available basis when they are offered.
Mr. Doran.
Wanted to voice support for that change of "are" to "may be provided." I think it really makes sense for the reasons that have been stated. I think the other point, the, we're authorized to provide service, it doesn't demand that we do it, and the other, for that further up, out of the charter school piece, but just in general, I think, you know, it gives us that flexibility, whether we're able to or not is another thing.
Not seeing any other hands. Nope, Mr. Burgess.
Sorry, I was just looking at the first sentence under charter school transportation, and I don't think we need it, but whether it's "are" or "may," I think that the sentence itself is superfluous. We're obviously establishing the policy, it is a policy that we're reading, we don't need to say we're establishing a policy hereby. I think that we could start with the second sentence, and I would even remove information in and just say charter school applications and contracts shall not supersede this policy, and then have those points listed.
Any discussion on that?
Home run.
Mr. Doran.
In number one, we're, are we taking out the word "shall," it's highlighted, that it may provide.
"Shall" does align with what state statute requires of school districts, so we are required to provide it on a space-available basis, and so while we're not, you know, it is kind of a "may" in these times, but like, if we did have space available, it is a "shall" for the district.
Okay, all right, as opposed to... So maybe we do need, maybe not that full sentence, but we do need the idea of that students attending a charter school, "may be provided transportation services," we may still need that part of that sentence. Yeah, and then if we do, we have the "shalls" and things along with it.
So moving on to transportation, emergency and safety procedures.
Do we have roles and duties?
Roles and duties, thank you, sorry, I think I thought it was part of the last one that wasn't looking. Roles and duties of bus drivers. Mr. Doran.
Okay, I had a question in the third paragraph, where it references on the third line, district provided phones. Are we doing that, or the contract has a responsibility of providing whatever communication?
Mr. DeGraw.
Yeah, currently, bus drivers do not use district provided phones, and I'm not aware of any contract that has included district provided equipment or electronic resources.
So in terms of that sentence, if we just deleted "district provided," do we need So in terms of that sentence to follow, if, if we just deleted district provided, do we need that? Is that sentence still good? So it's in compliance with district procedures? Or is that whole sentence coming out?
What I'm, what's immediately has come to mind is, while we traditionally don't have it, I'm, my wonderment is if, if bus drivers ever do use. If they do, I would want to check with Mr. Hinton. If there are circumstances, the rise, one offs where they do, we'd probably want to include, keep that language in there. If not, if the response is, yeah, never, then I think we'd be more safe in, in removing that. But I'd want to double check with Mr. Hinton first.
Mr. Doran?
I think with what Mr. DeGraw is saying, it makes sense to just take out district provided. But I think phones use, and we do have policies and procedures in terms of not driving and being on your phone. We also have electronic equipment, the cameras and the, which follow procedures, et cetera. So I'm thinking, yes, based on what you're saying, leave the rest of that sentence, just take out district provided.
Mr. DeGraw?
And just to, so I understand, so that's including any electronic device? All, all inclusive? Okay, yeah, that, that sounds good.
Eric, just have your hand up.
Not seen any other hands? So now we are on transportation, emergency and safety procedures. Doran?
Halfway down. Basically, fourth line, each school that has students, blah, 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 shall conduct at least three school bus drills each year. My experience, and that's now been a while since we have changed, is this contractor conducted those and we needed, our responsibility was to support it. We were not responsible for doing the drills, the contractor was.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the tricky part of that is, yes, I think the contractor provided, provides that service. But the responsibility lies with the school and the school district. And so if there's a way to delineate that to ensure that people understand that, you know, the school or the district needs to work in collaboration with Durham to do those drills.
Mr. DeGraw?
Correct, yeah. So this would direct Mr. Hinton to ensure that our contractor fulfills that, that portion of the, of the, of, of board policy and that we're doing those drills.
I would suggest that maybe adding that word in collaboration, conducting collaboration with the contractor. Because this one says the principal is going to walk out, is basically going to set up the drills and the drivers and are all going, they're going to support. But I think that, that piece of the school collaborating, working with the contractor is, is an important piece. Because really, we need to be out there when it's done. And they need the extra support of monitoring students. While they do that, we've always put extra staff to help out with that.
What if we changed it to each school that has students transported by school bus shall, shall ensure at least three school bus drills are conducted each school year? Because then we're to make sure they happen, but we are not the ones necessarily conducting it. Dr. Minor?
I like that change. And then the last sentence of the paragraph does say the school shall cooperate with the bus company in school bus emergency exit drills. So they're listed there as well.
Did it a bunch? I've helped with it in middle school. We definitely do it. Oh, you, and in Kentucky, yeah. So exciting, because you get to go out the back of the bus, and you never get to go out the back of the bus.
And the big kids, you get to help the little kids now? That was, that was awesome.
It was the best. Okay, um, next, traffic and parking controls. Anything on there? Not seen any hands. I'm going to say move on to food service. Mr. Burgess?
Sorry, just, just one question about the, the last one. Should it be school property or district property?
I think either is appropriate. Given that most of our traffic is at schools, I think it's appropriate to have school.
Okay, sounds good.
Now, food service. Mr. Doran?
This is on the grounds, practicality that list one to five, is that all doable for schools?
Amy Rouse did work with Diana on the building of this policy. So I believe she thinks it's, it's possible. Are there certain areas that you're finding concern with?
No, nothing. I was just thinking of as principals look at it, is this doable for them? You know, nothing's jumped out at me as being, oh, no, wait a minute, there's a red flag here. I just, you know, people who deal with it on a regular basis, so.
Mr. Doran, was there more?
Yeah, down at the very bottom. Let's see, we've got two different paragraphs here.
I can just interject real quick. This is just a, a request on the number five in the list. I, I just would like information on, on hurdles to, to working with local food producers at some point. It doesn't have, you know, not, not tonight.
Okay, the last paragraph is on the page 54, it looks like, on the news sheets tonight. The second to last sentence says, the board shall review and approve menu prices. I'm suggesting we delete that. We have never, I don't believe the board has ever done that. And I think that's more of an administrative and also falls into federal guidelines, et cetera.
We would definitely be amenable to that amendment, and I think that's good. Because as we've seen with the expulsion of inflation rates, there'll probably be more incremental rises in menu prices. And so not having to bring that back for approval every time would be efficient. Of course, the board will be made aware and abreast of those situations. But I would agree with taking out the approving portion of that.
In anyone, Mr. Doran?
I just had one other one. The programs financial reports, that last sentence there. I think in essence, we get that when we get, so, but I wanted to make, double check that we're meeting that, that's expected here.
Yeah, the, the monthly financials that you receive on the operating fund, there is the transportation and food services fund numbers as well. And so there's, and there's expenditure numbers in there also. So the board, yes, the board does receive that information.
Okay, and that's, that's why I felt that was meeting that. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have free and reduced priced meals. Not seeing anyone? Okay. Other food sales. Mr. Doran?
My question is under the section during school day, basically from midnight. Darn, I'm.
That is federal statute.
Is it?
Oh, yes. And they dinged us on it last year. They were not happy.
All right. Good to know. Yeah, I'm thinking. And then just in general, because these are sales, I just want to make sure we're not through this keeping parents who bring in cupcakes and those types of things for, and I think we deal with that elsewhere, but.
That's correct. Yep.
Ready to move to district records? I had something for this one. I said it seems out of place here with all the food stuff. Should it be moved earlier in the chapter to go with the video and record recording things? But that was just my take when I read it, yeah.
I think in general, yes, but given we're working so hard to align with AASB and their numbering system. When you look across their districts, everybody does have 3580 at the end. So I don't feel strongly one way or the other, but it is nice to align structure as much as possible.
That works. Anything on that particular one? Seen none? I think now we're on the last one. And prohibition of weapons on school property.
So, yeah, just real quick, we, this is our policy, and I had found a place to capture it in one of our, one of these ASB numbered policies. But at the last work session, it was asked that we pull it out, since it was so different than the policy it was embedded into. That's why it's not numbered yet. I'm trying to think of what else we looked at with this policy. I think we talked about, Dr. Minor and I talked about what could reasonably be, be considered a weapon. Because, Mr. Burgess, you had asked about that. The reference to the statute does go into the more specific language about what constitutes a deadly weapon. So we didn't make any changes at this time, but certainly we could take feedback to do so.
So we also received an email, germane to this today, from a teacher at Hutchinson that might be worth discussing, since we're on it right now anyways. It was the one about a Leatherman and whether or not it was acceptable for a teacher to be able to wear that. Currently, it would read that it's not if we're interpreting that a Leatherman could be a weapon. It's a small enough knife. And then you start talking about, is that only for staff? Could students, there, you get a lot of gray area. Did Dr. Minor have a?
I'd rather not comment on the email today, since we haven't given a response to that. But it could be a potential conversation part in this. But I do believe we address knives and another policy as well. So I'm not sure.
I don't think, I hope that that was, okay. Mr. Burgess?
Do culinary students use knives?
They do, and our current policy basically talks about if it's required for the specific course or job requirement. And so there are exemptions for, you know, specific courses, like culinary obviously needs to use knives. There's other, you know, building trades tools that are used in CTE courses and stuff like that, so. But what I'm not sure of in all of this policy reconfiguration is I know there's other policy that deals specifically with knives and kind of tools and classes. But I don't know if this is now superseding that or not in our policy revisions.
Ms. Dillard?
The, the only other policy that, that speaks to weapons is that 1048, our current policy, 1048.7, which is about student, or student possession of. And so that will be cross-referenced here, and it's still the, it's still the same. It's not addressed anywhere else. But that policy and administrative regulation does outline when it's okay to have weapons or, you know, what would be a knife or what would be considered a weapon based on approval for a program.
Mr. Burgess?
So my thought is that, you know, there, there are, I, I think it's, it's appropriate that there are exceptions for students in particular, when there's particular programs that, you know, require the use in order to facilitate instruction. I also would support having, potentially having some exemptions for adults in our school buildings. You know, I wouldn't want, I mean, like, a Leatherman, you know, it's a tool. Even if it has blades on it, that's, it's a tool. And they're smaller than the knives you get in culinary class. So I, I would, I would suggest that we could add some sort of carve out for adults in school buildings. The other thing that occurs to me is I, I normally carry a pocket knife and don't even think about it being there. So walking into a school building, you know, I, I wouldn't want as a parent to be, I mean, not that I'm going to pull it out and use it even, probably. But, you know, I just, I think that if it's, if it's, if, if there's not a carve out for adults, I mean, and I'm, I'm fine either way here. But I think that it would be potentially beneficial for both convenience and for, you know, not overstepping.
Mr. Doran?
I'm comfortable with the wording as is. And I think when we talk about an object that can reasonably be considered a weapon, there are those things that, yes, you know, really do, you know, bring a machete. You know, although that's a tool, you know, in certain sense. But I think it gives us that, that piece to either question that, yes, this is being used safely and for what other purpose might be coming in. But also that, and I think we have this covered in other areas too, is that if you use something as a weapon, that's a whole different story than something that even reasonably might be considered a weapon. A lot of things we would not consider weapon. A knitting needle, you would not consider a weapon. But if somebody uses it as such, then it, you know, you're using it there. And I think we have another policy sub leeway within that. And I would be very hesitant about getting overly specific in this policy that it, it really ties your hand and puts people in very difficult positions, so.
So my take would be, like, it sounds a lot like TSA. Like, what is and isn't, can be allowed and cannot be allowed, and how all that plays out in our daily lives there. I know growing up here in the. I know growing up here in Alaska and in my own family, my father went nowhere without his leatherman. That was a staple piece. I would be shocked to not see that on his belt. And so having grown up in that type of family, I can see why there are other families that that is their norm, that is a piece of their daily attire as much as glasses are for some other people. So my question would be, since this was something that a teacher directly asked us, what do we interpret reasonably considered a weapon? Should we write that out so it's explicitly there? Or do we just leave that up to administrative regulation and maybe they piece out something so the teachers know? Because clearly one is asking. Ms. Dillard?
Just to expound on the 1048.7 policy that we have, and that is specific to students, understandable, but it does go into the definition of a firearm, a deadly weapon and a non-deadly weapon very specifically. And so that cross-reference there does help get you to those definitions as opposed to redefining them in a new policy. Leatherman tool is listed in this administrative regulation as a non-deadly weapon. So under that definition, looking at the weapons policy that we're discussing right now, then it would not be considered a deadly weapon.
Do we reference, so that's the 1048.7?
Correct.
In the AR? Do we, and this is just because I don't know, have a way, so it says 1048.7, that'll be a clickable link. Do we delineate that that's an AR versus a policy? Or does that just take you to the policy and then you look for the AR?
That's a great question. They go to the policy for the most part, I believe. That's how AASB does it, so you would have to then make, find your way into the administrative regulation if that's where you were looking for the information.
And in the policy though, it will reference an AR?
Correct.
Okay, so you just, two extra clicks, but somewhere in there, they would be led to the, what they're looking for. Mr. Doran?
And I think this is an important thing, and without going to a specific instance, I think it's really important to have some generality. You know, I think there is pretty good general sense of what's a weapon, might be considered a weapon or not. And I would be very hesitant about getting a listing because then if it's not on the list, does that mean, you know, we wind up with the same situation? And, you know, so I, and I think you, we leave it to our administrators and our staff a lot of times, they're, that, I want to use common sense, you know, how something is brought in and how something is used, you know, is going to be how they deal with that. And so I, I think the generality here is I'm comfortable with, without nitpicking.
Ms. Dillard?
One last thought. It's also really important to just remember that this is all about a criminal statute. It is against the law to bring in a deadly weapon into a school environment. So it's not just the school choosing what we want adults to be bringing in, it's because it's the law that you cannot have a deadly weapon on school grounds.
Mr. Burgess?
So while this discussion has been going on, I looked up the statute that's referenced, and it doesn't look to me like the definition of a deadly weapon is in that, in the Alaska statute, but rather the statute refers to US Code where that is defined. So I would suggest if we're relying on references to define it, that we would add 18 USC 921. Oh, wait, that might not even be the appropriate one. I apologize. Because that's specific to firearms. I'm just, I guess I'm just not seeing the definition of weapon in that Alaska statute.
I think it's under the definition section for the whole.
Oh.
So, but that points to the fact that maybe we should add that statute too to make it easier to get to. I want to say, I'd have to look. It might be 1181, but I'd have to look.
While we were going through that, I went and looked up the AR. And so here's my question. We still say that possession of a weapon or any object that may reasonably be considered a weapon on school property or any facility or district owned vehicle, you know, is strictly prohibited. And the AR says that a leatherman is a weapon, a non-deadly weapon, but it is a weapon. So does that mean that leathermans are not allowed on school property? That's the question.
It depends.
Students are not allowed to have weapons.
Yes, it's clear that students are, it is not allowed for students, but there are exemptions based on use case for individual courses.
And where does that lie in policy or AR?
I believe in 10, hold on.
In, in the administrative regulation, it says the superintendent or designee shall permit the possession of weapons dangerous or deadly instruments and non-deadly weapons at the request of a teacher and with the assurance that such possession serves a positive appropriate purpose. So.
Does every teacher need to request the ability to carry a leatherman if they would like to? I know, I'm sorry, guys.
I don't think we're going to solve that email tonight. I think, I think it's a complex issue that we're working through, but.
Mr. Doran?
Okay, I think that's administration to carry out the policies and in the best interest. I think in terms of the email, that's an administrative referral to handle it, it's personnel and such. And that's how I would address that. And I think not to just one instance, but this is a piece where we leave it to administration to, you know, because there's any number of reasons I'm thinking of. The facilities guys, they're walking around and they need something quick, you know. So I think this is an administrative piece. We know the intent. I, I'm comfortable with the administration to, to deal with it.
I agree with that. I think that was our last one, right? Does that mean we are ready to adjourn? Okay. With that, we are adjourned.